To the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, that's allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Let's pray. Father God, once again, we thank you for how blessed we have been here in Brownsville. And again, we lift up those that were in the path of Hurricane Harvey. Lord, we ask you to continue to heal, continue to provide for each of them, and give them clear direction as to how to rebuild their lives. Lord, we ask you to keep neighbors helping neighbors, keep agencies helping them also, and keep unity in the whole area, Lord, and bring our nation back to unity, Lord God. Father God, we also lift up those that are in the path of Hurricane Irma. Lord, we ask you to protect them, to lead and guide them. And Lord, at this time where there's so much tragedy happening, we ask that you draw each of our hearts close to yours so that we can receive your direction, your clear direction, both personally and for our families, and Lord, for here today with our mayor and city commissioners and every presenter, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
We will now have the mayor's activity update.
Just a little notice, tomorrow I will be with the mayor of Mount of Morris, and we will be announcing our BIC, well, it's a bi-national 10K that is being done in connection with the Teleton of Mexico and the United States with Mr. Amigo Fernando Landeros. And just so that you know ahead of time, it's going to be October the 7th, and we're going to be running across the bridge and circling back. And it's a display of, first of all, if you know anything about the Teleton, it's about children with disabilities and raising money for those kids. Because that particular program says, you know, when kids are born with disabilities, they're born with a barrier. And we don't need barriers, we need bridges, and we need bridges of love. And that's really the main theme behind all that. So, God willing, you'll see it tomorrow on television of some type. But just so that you know ahead of time, I think it'll be a great event and hopefully show that world that it doesn't, you don't need a crisis to come together. You know, we're better than that. So, that's all I have.
Commissioners' activity update?
Mayor, I want to begin by thanking all our staff that has been available for the collections that we've been doing over the last week at the public library. We sent two trailers that left Friday morning to San Antonio. The state has directed us to send the donations that we're sending to the San Antonio Food Bank because they're distributing from Corpus all the way up to northern Houston. So, we've got two more trailers that are set to go out, God willing, tomorrow morning, and we'll probably have two more to go out on Friday. And that's, we're going to cease the effort there at the city because there's a lot, I'm sure you're going to report right now, and there's other people that are volunteering. And a lot of what's happening is that the community is holding their own collections, and they're bringing it to us to ship. And it's running into a big, it's not a mess, it's, people are happy to do it, but when you ask the same people to do it three or four times to make a run to San Antonio for free, it starts adding up in their pocketbooks. And as it is, they were, they weren't able to travel out of the city because of the hurricane. And now they're trying to catch up with their own business, and then Labor Day came into the play. So, they're trying to catch up, so we're trying, it's real difficult to try to find people that are willing to take the trip and ship over there and get the things out there on time. So, we're going to cease this Friday, but as it is, from the collections that we did there, it's six 53-foot trailers, full of donations and full of all the, I mean, I want to thank Amphil's, Mr. Gaddy's, we had, I mean, Amphil's came out with nine trucks, GMS, we had all these different companies, just, I mean, during the time that I was there, just dropping off donations, you know, no particulars, just bringing their donations and sending it out to the people in need. So, thank you to them.
Well, that's a very good message and thank, on behalf of the whole city, thank you so much for that. I think I understand from the national, I think I got a call, that now they wish that if there are some donations, they prefer donations through the Red Cross or actual money. I think they have pretty much supplied the food and the water to a certain degree. So, anyway, all the help they can get is appreciated.
I still have a report. And so, yes, just like Commissioner Longoria just reported, we do have a trailer that has been set up at the Chick-fil-A on Four Corners, they're in District Two. I really want to thank city staff for making sure that we were equipped with, for making sure that we were equipped with everything we needed. We have banners and all kinds of stuff. Today, we received an enormous amount of support. And just like the mayor was saying, I think a lot of people are winding down with the food and water and things like that, but really, this trailer is specifically being designated to the Port Aransas area where a lot of people lost everything. We have homes sitting there with no roofs on them and all kinds of water damage. So, the really cool thing about our truck is we're collecting, we're taking everything. If you want to give it, we will find somebody that has been devastated by the hurricane and we will get it to them. But more specifically, we are accepting building material. Today, we had a shipment, a huge shipment from McCoy's of, I'm forgetting the name.
Sheetrock.
Sheetrock, there you go. My dad, as a matter of fact, went to McCoy's to go buy some, he paid for 29 of them, and the guy behind him said, hey, you know, what are you going to do with that? And he said, well, I'm sending it over there to Chick-fil-A because they're collecting. So, the guy behind him matched him and bought another 29 sheets of sheetrock. So, that was incredible. All I have to say is that here in Brownsville, every single person who has opened your heart, you are amazing. You are what Texas is, you are what Brownsville is, and I am so grateful to you, because today I'm so sunburned, it's going to take me forever to make my arm one color again. But I am so grateful for the love and the admiration that I have seen, and I want to thank Chick-fil-A, Seahorse Transport, they have provided as many trucks as we can fill and as many as we need. Just as people feel like the donations are winding down, guess what? People are still going back to a place where they, there is no home. So, for as long as you'll continue to give, we will continue to receive and we will get it to them. And I want to thank New Harvest Ministries, the owners of Red Barn Tire, oh, most importantly, Brownsville PD. Brownsville PD is one of the ones that helped us organize this, and thanks to them, their trucks are being manned 24/7, and they are helping us really, really pick up from the community. So, all I have to say, aside from everything that I just said, is our community is amazing, and I want to thank all of our citizens for opening your hearts and making sure that even in Rockport, even though your house has fallen down, even though everything you have is gone, you have people on the other side of Texas who are thinking of you. And to me, that is what being blessed is, and that is what makes us the most amazing city in the entire world. That's it.
Okay, the next item is?
Next item we have is a proclamation that will be read at their event, so we're not going to have a proclamation for tonight. So, we're going to go on to number four, presentation, employee of the month.
Mayor, members of the commission, it's tradition now that as we celebrate and honor 911, September 11th, we honor one of our first responders with the employee of the month, whether it's one of our police officers or firemen. Today, we want to honor a very special fireman, Ronaldo Ariola. He is celebrating 20 years of service with the city of Brownsville. He is known for his very much positive attitude, and believe me, he recognizes his knowledge and his abilities, and all the new firemen that come into our department, he's got a goal in hand in assisting them into understanding what EMS is all about and offer a lot of the training. He goes beyond that, and he has created some murals and things like that for our fire stations, very nice work, and also some plaques for, as some of our people have retired from the fire department. So, we feel we picked a very special person. And he's here with his family, so. We give him the little plaque, the pin. He's not on the dive team, so I don't think this watch is waterproof, but we'll give you one. He's got a few words for us. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the city commission, thank you very much for the award. I'd like to thank my fire chief, Carlos Arizondo, for nominating me. It's a privilege and an honor to represent myself and my fellow brothers and sisters of the Brownsville Fire Department. And I'd like to thank my family also for all the support these 20 years of service. Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you.
It will be A through K.
With approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have public comment period. We do have two. First, we have Mr. Jerry McHill.
I don't think he's here tonight.
No, he's here.
Oh, there he is.
He, he, he's a little younger than I am, but he moves slower.
Your honor, distinguished members of the commission, ladies and gentlemen, the next time I appear in the city chambers, I promise to take my full three minutes. It's not quite the same as the 15 minutes of fame that each of us experiences in our lifetime, but in the third world capital of the United States, we should take the meager crumbs that are offered us. Brownsville has a glorious history, but it also has a dark side. Two individuals whom this city has chosen to honor are unworthy of this distinction. They don't deserve to be placed on pedestals, like the B.I.S.D. that has time and time again baptized its schools with names of scoundrels. Brownsville has decided that these two heroes, these two men are heroes rather than villains. Who are these two despicable characters? They are Charles Stillman, the founder of Brownsville, and Jefferson Davis, the president of the Confederacy. They share much in common, and neither is honorable. They are both racist, they are both slave owners, and they are both traitors to the United States of America. These aren't wild rantings, these are facts. I'm not here to lead a crusade against these blackguards. I'm not asking the commission to rename Stillman's Love Nest in front of the federal courthouse the best little whorehouse in Brownsville. And I'm not asking the commission to remove the memorial to Davis in Washington Park. But if I were an African-American, out of principle, I would never attend a function at Stillman's Shack, nor would I attend some Rodeo Fest in Washington Park that features Davis described by the daughters of the Confederacy as a great American. Great Americans were not racist, great Americans were not slave owners, and great Americans didn't betray the United States. I'm only here to advise the commission that when you make decisions that take into account our local history, we should always remember that Stillman and Davis were not good men. I repeat, they were racist, they were slave owners, and they betrayed the United States of America. I want to thank the commission for allowing me the opportunity to speak before this esteemed council, only made possible by the thousands of American soldiers who have sacrificed their lives to protect our most sacred right of free speech. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Edgar Gaussin.
Thank you, as always, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. It's about bicycles, of course. Sherrills, there's, the sherrills all over the cities. The public has taken notice, and I think it's a great thing. I believe there was some confusion about these because, I mean, there's these signs and on the street, and people weren't sure what they were all about, which is normal because we're not used to. But I think the majority of the public appreciate these signs, and I think it's creating more awareness that there's bicyclists around the city, so. So, thank you for that. The bike lane on International Boulevard. I love the way it connects straight into the Southmost Trail. It's a long lane, it's really good, and lots of people are using it, people appreciate this, and especially people whose only means of transportation is a bicycle, so. So, these are the individuals that we don't know about. These are the individuals that are not on social media, but it's important that you're taking them into consideration when you do all this. The bicycle lane on Harrison Street, it's also great. I think there's still some work that needs to be done. I believe they're going to make it into a protected bike lane, but I'm not sure. Anyway, I think it's great, and overall, we've been hearing a lot of positive comments about them. So, I want to thank the city commission and the city employees for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, right? Item number seven?
Items for individual consideration. Action item number seven, consideration and action to appoint two members to the Capitol Improvement Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners. This is a request to appoint two members to the Capitol Improvements Advisory Committee. And just to give you a quick overview on the makeup of the advisory committee, it's comprised of seven members that are appointed by you all. At least 40% of them, they need to be representatives of the real estate development or building industries. One member has to be a representative from the ETJ, and city officials or employees cannot be part of the committee. Among the duties and responsibilities for the committee, well, first and foremost is to advise and assist the city in adopting land use assumptions, which is something that has been completed, it was completed in 2014. They need to review the Capitol Improvements Plan and file written comments. And another one is to file semi-annual reports to city commission so they can report progress on the Capitol Improvements Plan. So, we have three applicants. One is Armando Ibarra, and his background is in community development, Chloe Dodson, and Ruben Franco. And so, again, we're seeking appointment of two members.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move for Ms. Dodson.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Armando has also been with Nick Mitchell for all.
I'll move for Armando. I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You have two members. Thank you. Item number eight?
Action item number eight, consideration and action on memorandum of understanding between the city of Brownsville and the Brownsville Housing Authority regarding the development and expansion of the Belden Trail in the Buena Vida neighborhood.
Mayor, city commissioners, this is an MOU between the Housing Authority and the city of Brownsville. As you know, the Housing Authority has been doing a lot of work in the Buena Vida neighborhood with regards to the Choice Neighborhood Grant, and this is, this corridor is one of those, you know, projects that the community has identified that they want in the neighborhood. So, we reached out to the Brownsville Housing Authority, they have agreed to this MOU to match 50,000, and the city will put in 50,000 towards the development of this trail. We have submitted a grant to BCI-C in the amount of 175. So, 175 plus 50 plus 50 is 275,000 is the budget that we are working with for this trail. And as you can see by the map on the screen here, these are, this is kind of like the overall plan, the overall map. The red line that's already built is Belden Trail. The orange lines are in the bike plan and also built. And this is a little, this is a last little spur of the Belden Line that just kind of remains over there in Buena Vida. It borders Roosevelt Park. And, you know, like I said, the community has identified this project as a top priority project in the Choice Neighborhood Planning Process. This is a very rough rendering of what it would look like, and really, following the same design standards that Belden Trail and Belden Connect. So, this is the third phase of Belden. You could call it Belden III, you could call it Buena Vida, but it's an important part of Belden Trail.
So, it goes right by the county jail, on the other side of the street from the county jail to the expressway?
Yeah, exactly. And there is an opportunity in another phase to connect it to the Battlefield Trail on the other side. So, let me, yeah, if I can write on here. No, it doesn't let me. But under the expressway, between the frontage roads, there's an opportunity there.
Or southward to the university, to the Deccan.
Yes. So, we asked for your approval tonight, and this is all, so this MOU is written in a way that it's pending grant award. So, if the grant doesn't, isn't awarded at BCI-C, then this MOU doesn't happen. If it is awarded, then it happens, so.
entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine?
Action item number nine, consideration and action to approve the new Brownsville South Padrolan International Airport Terminal Design.
Good evening, commission, honorable mayor. Let me first explain how we got here real quick, and then we'll go through the study that we've conducted. Initially, back in about 2014, we, the airport began studies of recently completed terminals, just so we could get an idea of what to build. Then, our consultant, they provided the city with several variations. That was followed by some meetings and town halls and things like that to get more feedback from the public. Final designs were narrowed down based on the function and cost of the terminal, and then local input was included, ultimately arriving at the final two designs that we had. And that expanded our design budget, so we're sort of at a crossroads now. The FAA encouraged the airport just about a month ago to complete the design phase because it's being funded by the FAA, and we also, it jeopardizes any future funding if we don't get this completed. So, to stay on schedule, management commissioned a public study of the two designs, which provides community participation and feedback. So, so with that, I think I'll turn it over to Jeffrey Malar, who conducted the study.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, good to see you. First and foremost, on this particular study was conducted, it's almost a blind and a blind. It was conducted by Tequila Group, Integrative Marketing and Communications. It was commissioned by the airport, then we actually hired college students that actually went through and actually conducted the survey. The methodology was created by Tequila Group as well as Dr. Kimberly Silver. So, we're working at a very high level. We worked with a confidence level of 95% with a 5% margin of error, and the results will speak for themselves. First and foremost, this was what we call quasi-experimental, oh, I'm a walker, quasi-experimental one-on-one intercept data collection model based on random selection. That means that we see a person, we would actually approach the person to see if they qualified to be involved in the study. The method is coupled with a qualitative approach, using integrative diagrams, multimedia platforms of equal value. Sample size was to reflect the target population of multiple segments with a confidence level as a set of 95%. However, we only surveyed adults. We felt it was unnecessary to survey children. And what you're seeing before you is our goal. So, in the study, Brownsville males represented, of 18 to 34 represented 69. Our goal was 64 surveys. 35, 49, 60, our goal was 66. 50-plus was 52, a little under our goal, 43, but we didn't think that made a difference in the survey. We approached this a little bit different. In our approach of working with the survey, we took into contrast effect and contrast environments. For an example, if somebody pointed to, in a survey, it said, is the one on the left, do you prefer the one on the left or the one on the right? That's a bias. If you, is one better than two? That's a bias. Is four stars better than three? That's a bias. We eliminated all bias in this particular research study by actually using gestures, and we would ask the respondent, tell us which one you prefer, and they would actually point. Then the questions would continue from there. We also worked with, involved in the process of open-ended questions before closed-ended questions. The reason is, is called a recency effect. When people hear something, they have a tendency to repeat it. So, if the open-ended questions were at the end, they would be regurgitating words they liked in the survey. So, we didn't want them to do that. So, we used, on the back of the survey, when the person would point to it, is you see tango, you see x-ray. So, the interviewer, the field representative in the street, when they're doing interviews, the person would say, I like this one, then mark tango, or I like this one, then mark x-ray. And that made it much easier than saying left or right, one or two, A or B, to eliminate all those different biases. As you'll notice, I'm going to go back a second, x-ray, as you're seeing, you're seeing a close-up view and you're seeing a bird's eye view. And if you watch it, I'm going to flip it to tango, it's the same exact view. We chose these two views to give the citizens of Brownsville the opportunity to see them in an equal light and let them make their selections. Here's what they said. Of the 406 respondents, 320 selected tango. 85 respondents selected x-ray. And if I go back to that, that's 78.8%. Did I go too fast? Business travelers. Business travelers were surveyed as an insight. Of our total surveys, we needed 383 surveys to reach that golden mark of a 95% level of confidence. We surveyed 406. We're over our confidence level. We chose insights of business travelers. Business travelers told us, 86% of the business travelers told us they prefer tango. 27.9% of the leisure travelers told us they wanted tango. 72.9% wanted tango. 75% of the business owners who reside in Brownsville selected tango. And I need to say this, during the survey, we didn't care which one they selected, that was not our decision. Our decision was just to see which ones they won. That's the reason we had students actually do the survey. Of the persons 18 to 34, tango rated higher than any other cell, the 33.39% tango. That's two and three times over x-ray. Then we get into Brownsville residents, females as a percentage. We interviewed 227 females out of the 406 that we conducted, citizens of Brownsville. They overwhelmingly chose tango, 82.38%. Among all males, tango was preferred, 72.63%. This is a word cloud. One of the parts of the study, it was asked to use words to describe the one, your selected choice. This is the words they used, being the community, to describe tango. Future, angles, fun, windows, fresh. By the way, the By the way, the, the, the size of font has nothing to do, this is just design, has nothing to do with whether it was answered more or, or there was multiple answers, it's just words. Then we asked the same group, tell us what you don't like about X-ray. Very weird route, new, they said, they said some good things, it's small, boring, turn off. These are their words, not our words. One of the questions we asked, does the architectural design create a positive, negative, or neutral emotion within you? And the clear answer is positive. Tango was positive, with two hundred and sixty-four respondents saying it's positive. When asked the architectural design of the airport terminal would impact you in any way, the likelihood of using Brownsville South Padra Island International Airport, the respondents said, yes, Tango will impact me. When we asked leisure travelers, would, would Tango impact you? They said yes. Forty-five point nine-five percent said yes, they're more likely to fly through Brownsville with a design of Tango. Of the business travelers surveyed, thirty-one point four-three said that Tango would actually influence them, make them change, not likelihood, but influence them, big difference. And that influencing factor is something that's very impactful to the city of Brownsville. Does your preferred design give you a sense of community pride? Seventy-one point nine percent said yes. Tango gives them a sense of community pride. One of the things that we surveyed, and we're closing, we're coming to an end here, is ninety-three point one percent of the Brownsville residents stated that a new airport terminal is exciting to them, ninety-three point one percent. That included both Tango and X-ray. So the citizens of Brownsville are excited about a new terminal. So just as a quick overview, ninety-three one, uh, ninety-three point one percent of Brownsville residents stated that the fact that Brownsville building the new airport gave them a sense of excitement. Seventy-eight point eight percent said resident surveys selected Tango. Seventy-five percent of Brownsville's business owners selected Tango. Seventy-two point nine percent of leisure travelers selected Tango. Eighty-six percent of business travelers selected Tango. You see the pattern. Sixty-five percent of Brownsville residents said Tango created a positive emotion. Forty-nine point three of Brownsville residents that selected Tango are more likely to use the Brownsville Airport. Seventy-two percent of all males surveyed selected Tango, and you can read the rest, it just follows the same suit.
In closing, uh, what we'd like to do is just point out that, based on this study, that the community, they selected Tango. Based on that information, our board, we've all, you know, met, and they've selected Tango, and, uh, we've also met with the airlines, business and leisure travelers, they've all selected Tango, and finally, the airport staff, they unanimously, unanimously selected Tango as well, so it's the airport's recommendation that we go with the Tango design, uh, over here, and, uh, if you guys could vote on it, that'd be great, that's, that's really it.
Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm sorry?
Yes. Are the Tango representatives here?
I'm sorry?
Are the Tango representatives here?
Tango representatives.
The designers.
Oh, the designers, um, I'm gonna say yes.
Okay. Um, we failed to meet, I called for a meeting last week, but that's fine. What's the price tag on this?
The price tag on the terminal building is roughly thirty, thirty-one million. Uh, the price tag on the entire project, which includes the roads, uh, uh, South Diverge Road and some other things.
No, I'm just talking about the terminal.
The terminal itself is thirty to thirty-one million, right now.
I'm not gonna insult anybody, that just doesn't look like a thirty-one million dollar, uh, bu- building to me.
Right.
And I have to answer to the taxpayer, and that you'll have to prove to me.
Well, I'll, I'll wanna see other designs.
You'll get the vote, don't, don't take me wrong, you're gonna get the vote, but I'm the one that has to answer to the taxpayer, and that does not look like a thirty-one million dollar building to me.
Well, we could only design to a certain point, and we had to stop, because until we're directed by, by the commission here, um, or by the public, uh, until we're directed in, into what direction to go, we couldn't design multiple options to a final, uh, condition. So this is lacking any of the accoutrements you'd have, like materials, I mean, so it has no color, of course, I mean, I don't like the way it looks, but, you know, that's, it, we've gotta go with the architecture, get that down, then we can fill it all in. Uh, we already have the floor plan, it's the same on both of the designs that we had, um, so, all I can tell you is just be a little bit patient, we'll get, we'll get you designs that show more character, uh, and that's very representative of Brownsville. It, we'll be using local materials, we'll have, um, I heard that somebody is a mural painter, uh, I believe he left, but, um, we'll get people, local artwork, local materials, and we'll, we'll make sure that it reflects Brownsville.
I'm not looking for a reflection of Brownsville, I'm looking for a thirty-one million dollar building that looked like a thirty-one million dollar building.
Well, this is, uh, the original, just to give you more information, the original terminal design was sixty-five thousand square feet, then we met with CBP, and they said they needed a minimum of twenty-two thousand square feet, so it ballooned the project from that original, that's why the price tag went up as well. It, it went up because we didn't plan on that twenty, or, uh, yeah, twenty thousand square feet, twenty-two thousand square feet. So we fit it all in, and, and this is the result.
Have you had follow-up discussions with them?
With the CBP?
Yeah.
Uh, we have continuing discussions.
They were talking about trying to reduce their footprint.
Yes, uh, one of the, one of the components of their operation is canines, uh, they don't necessarily see that need at this airport, so they're gonna, they, they have to go back to Washington to get approval to vary and, and get away from design, I mean, from their, from their standard.
From their requirement.
Right, so they can eliminate things like extra offices that they normally build in for expansion or something, they can eliminate possibly some of the canine and storage areas and stuff, um, so that would reduce their footprint, and as that happens, we would, we would in turn, uh, reduce the design and the construction costs related to it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Next, you have the next item as well.
I do.
Action item number ten, consideration action to accept a routine airport maintenance grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from the Texas Department of Transportation for projects at the Brownsville South Padra Island International Airport.
Uh, this is called a ramp grant offered by TexDOT, uh, it's just an annual grant to match the maintenance funds that we currently expend on airport maintenance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eleven. Thank you, Brian.
Action item number eleven, consideration action authorizing Brownsville Metro to adopt and implement the Transit Asset Management Plan and targets for rolling stock, equipment, and facilities.
Good evening, Honorable, um, Mayor and City Commissioners, RJ Gatz, B Metro Assistant Director. Uh, also with me, we have Ms. Sarah Chubane, she's our Grants and Public Outreach Manager, and also Mr. Eddie Alarde, he's our Fleet Contract Manager. Um, I'll be discussing the Brownsville Metro's Transit Asset, uh, Management Plan and Targets Required by the FTA. That's the Federal Transit Administration as attached in your packet. If you can follow with me, um, along in your packet, it, uh, looks like that. All right. First of all, we, we had to set, we had to set some goals and objectives, uh, to understand the, the FTA and the TAM requirements of us, asked of us to do, um, how does B Metro meet the TAM requirements and creating a baseline, and also the steps for our agency to meet the FTA requirements. As I mentioned, we, first of all, we had to educate ourselves a little bit on the, on the CFR, what, in, in what was being asked of us to do, to complete, uh, we had to review the FTA CFR rule. Uh, what is the TAM rule? The federal requirement assets, uh, sets out minimum asset, um, management practices for transit providers, and the purpose of the TAM is a, is to help achieve and maintain a state of good repair for the nation's public transportation assets, which it, which it estimates, estimates to be backlogged at eighty-nine point eight billion dollars. The Transit Asset Management is a business model, that, business model that provides funding based on the condition of transit assets in order to achieve or maintain transit networks in the, in a state of good repair. The FTA final rule requires all transit agencies to maintain and document minimum TAM standards. B Metro is considered a small transit, uh, provider, under one hundred vehicles, but we also live in a, a large urban zoned area, so we fall under a tier-two category. There are four conditions of the TAM plan that must, uh, be contained in the plan, which are, one, an inventory of assets, two, a condition assessment of inventoried assets, three, documentation of the use of a decision support tool, and four, a prioritization of investments. So what, what are our assets in B Metro? They consist of rolling stock, the buses, our paratransit units, and also the MetroConnect Currently, under the plan, we have forty-one units total. Under the equipment, uh, the, it, the equipment consists of all our support units, the utility trucks used for maintenance work and shelter repairs, and fifteen passenger vans. Those are all considered non-revenue vehicles. And lastly, we have our facilities. We have the maintenance facility located at Jose Colunga, we have our administration building at La Plaza Terminal, our parking garage facility, and the passenger terminal known as the North Side Transportation, which, which was recently re-.
Sir, the twenty-eighteen target column with the percentages, what do those percentages represent?
The percentages represent in each, in each category, uh, how many vehicles have to be replaced within a, uh, like, in the rolling stock, it would be fourteen years, so nineteen percent of that is, uh, is what, that comes out, and it's actually an automatic calculation that we use from the FTA guideline, and so I'm just plugging in the numbers and we, it comes out, uh, nineteen percent.
So nineteen percent of your fleet needs to be maintained in twenty-eighteen, is that it?
Needs to be considered as targeted replacement. It doesn't necessarily have to be replaced at that time, it's targeted to be replaced anytime thereafter.
And under passenger facilities, does that include bus shelters?
No, sir. Bus, bus shelters are not, are not required for us to include as part of the assets.
Okay.
And, uh, even City Hall, we, we, uh, it's, we come to City Hall very often for, for meetings and things like that, that's not included, it's part of the facilities.
Is there another area where it is included, bus shelters?
No. Not, no, now, we internally, uh, have, uh, all the bus shelters, uh, on an asset inventory listing. Yes, we do have that internally, but it's not required, required by the FTA.
Under this plan?
Yes, under this plan. That's a good question.
Could you, could you provide us with that? Could you provide us with that asset for the bus shelters? Cause I think you've asked me for money for like three times in the last two years, so I'd like to see what you've done with that.
Sure, we can, uh, we can provide you an update at a later time, we, uh, we have a plan.
I was hoping like next week.
Next week?
Yes, sir.
We have an improvement, uh, bus shelter program going on at the same time, so we'll include that as well.
Yes, please, cause I think, uh, people have been asking for it for a long time, so I think it's time we start moving on it.
Yes.
Excuse me, Commissioner, do you want that on, on a meeting, or?
If, you can just provide us a report, and that way we can start looking, and we can figure out where we're actually building, where we need to build some more, and we can actually start figuring out, well, what are the needs, and how much money do we have to allocate, maybe we can start working on it, like on a two-year plan or a three-year plan, and we actually start heading in a direction where we have the most used bus stops under shelters.
And would you include a map, a route map? A route map?
Yes.
I'd like to familiarize myself with that.
Also, I was told that the bus stop by McKenzie, they would look into seeing how much it would cost to move it, and I was never contacted back after that.
Okay.
It's on McKenzie and South Padra Island Highway. We've had fatalities. Thanks.
What do we need?
So, with the template that was used by the FTA, uh, we, we've identified six rolling stock, which is a nineteen percent, as you mentioned earlier, that buses, uh, exceeding the, the ULB, which, which means it's, which stands for Useful Life Benchmark of fourteen years for the buses. The support equipment is, uh, there are seven that are identified that exceed the ULB of eight years, but typically, those units last pretty long, uh, you know, eight years is kinda short, but we're still using what they're, they're suggesting, but it doesn't mean that we have to replace them instantly.
So it's eight years for the equipment and fourteen years for the revenue vehicles?
Correct. And, um, by two thousand nineteen, we project that we'll have five buses remaining to be replaced, uh, cause we have plans to be replacing units within the next year and a half. If the Tiger Grant comes through, then we'll be sitting at about five buses that are gonna be left for replacement in two thousand nineteen.
Do we still have ownership of those, they were pretty old, those trolleys, they looked like trolley buses, do we have those still, or?
Trolleys?
They were like, streetcar, they were buses, but they looked like streetcars. They're gone?
They're, they're, they're been deleted from our inventory.
Okay.
So basically, our, our management approach consists of three steps, we have, uh, there's day-to-day decisions related to maintaining equipment, uh, second, there's scheduled versus corrective repairs, uh, decisions, and three, using a decision support tool such as the asset condition assessment, monitoring work, uh, repair history, impact on capital prioritization and replacing and disposing of the unit, that completes the whole cycle of the, of the plan, or the, the life cycle of the unit. Finally, the, uh, the TAM targets, based on the FTA criteria, as we mentioned, uh, we're, we're, our plans, within the year and a half, we have a RFP that is gonna be going out pretty soon, our plans are, are to, to replace four units right away with that, uh, if the, if the, uh, if the Tiger Grant comes through, then we're gonna replace another four units, those will be diesel hybrid units, and they're specific for that grant, but those will be four units, the first four units will be for MetroConnect, and the other hybrid units will be for in-town, B Metro. And we also have one utility truck that is in, in drastic need of being replaced, and I can tell you an estimate, about thirty-five grand for that. That concludes this, uh, presentation. If you have any other questions, I'm here to answer, and they're here to answer them too, as well. Uh, B Metro requests your approval of our B Metro TAM plan.
Any other questions, this gentleman, or any, that, that people are with him? Have now entertained a motion?
To approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Item number twelve?
Action item number twelve, consideration action to award a term contract for the city depository services.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, um, in your packet you have a, an analysis of the procurement of these particular services, legal advertising... Legal advertisement appeared in the Brownsville Herald two times on June 25th and July 2nd. Pre-proposal meetings were conducted Thursday, July 6th. Seal proposals were received for this project on July 13th. Two proposals were received. Evaluation Committee met, evaluated the proposals, conducted two negotiations with the proposal. And based on the negotiations, the staff is recommending a contract to provide depository service to the city to BBA Compass.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Lupe. You got the next item.
Action item number 13, consideration action to award the specific and aggregate stop-loss medical insurance coverage contract to an insurance carrier.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this City of Brownsville, City of Brownsville Health Insurance Plan is self-funded. Since the city's health insurance is self-funded, the city purchases stop-loss insurance to protect itself from large or high claims. The City of Brownsville is fully complying with Affordable Healthcare Act. Legal notices or request for proposal for both individual-specific and aggregate stop-loss insurance coverage was placed in the Brownsville Herald on July 7th and July 14th. TML IBBP assisted us in this process. The deadline for submitting proposals is 2:00 PM, July 21st. 19 quotes were received from, from five different stop-loss insurance companies. Bid comparisons of the top eight quotes are as follows. Out of the top eight quotes, quote number one from Partner RE, American Insurance Company was the best and most advantageous for the city. It is a 1215 stop-loss contract that includes medical and RX coverage. Based on quote number one proposed, we recommend the stop-loss insurance contract for individual-specific aggregate stop-loss coverage be awarded to Partner RE, American Insurance Company, which includes a $200,000 individual stop-loss deductible and $150,000 aggregate deductible for an annual premium of $831,249. Quote number one also includes annual aggregate attachment point of $70,53,303. It's an annual contract.
Now, Lupe, how come, I'm looking at this bid comparison and you have TRU, American Fidelity, and Partner RE? But then you go like to quote five and it's again Liberty Mutual, quote six Liberty Mutual, quote seven Liberty Mutual. So it looks like it's only two companies, but different bids?
Initially, there were five bids. The initial summits were for five bids and I got all.
Well, let me, I guess I should back up a little. So, correct me if I'm wrong, I was under the impression that we ran our insurance through TML. But apparently, you just said that we actually manage our own insurance.
Well, TML manages our claims. TML manages, through IBBP manages our claims. They assisted us through this process of getting a stop-loss carrier. On the stop-loss carrier, the initial proposal, there was five carriers that submitted bids. After those bids were evaluated by TML IBBP, there was two, two carriers that were, that were provided these eight quotes. So there was two, two phases to it. The first phase was the initial quote. The second phase is the ones that actually got, got selected as the last, the most advantageous for the city.
And why do we use TML to manage our claims? Or how does that work? Or what does TML have to do? Or how does it work?
As a self-insured, they're the third-party administrator. They handle all our claims on behalf of the city. The city provides them a general guidance of the, of the, the health coverage that we're going to be providing. And they're the third-party administrator that manages all the claims on behalf of the city.
And do we pay them to do this?
We do, sir.
Is it like a percentage or?
I don't have the exactly, but there is, there is a cost associated with that.
And have you ever looked to see if that's the cheapest available? Because I seem, we seem to do all this stuff with TML, but I really don't see what the advan, I mean, it's just like, everybody goes with TML, but sometimes there aren't really advantages. So I would like to know, well, why do we really use TML?
That's, that's a good question, and we could follow up with a list of reasons why.
Yeah, Pete's pretty knowledgeable on this.
Yeah.
We don't pay commissions, or otherwise we would pay for another agent, for instance. Normally, an agent, when they provide this type of services, there is a commission around maybe 40, 50,000 dollars per year. And, but we've been using TML IBBP for years. Actually, we can continue using them because they're also a political subdivision like we are. They're like in a pool. And that's where the savings comes in. We have been very, very pleased with our services throughout the years. They take care of us. They make sure that anytime there's a claim that exists, a certain amount like a stop-loss, for instance, 200,000, they keep track of this and make sure that we get refunded for any of those excess claims. In the past, I've been dealing with some of these companies for many years. And one time, for another company before TML, I had to go all the way to Houston, demanding, I would write letters, where is our refund? We have exceeded a certain particular claim. And it took us a while to get refunds. So I have dealt with this in the past. They, TML, is on top of this. They make sure that we get refunded. And I believe we already are going to be getting how much this year, Lupe, in stop losses?
600,000?
You've got about 400,000, 300,000? 700,000. 700,000 that we're going to get refunds. And again, because we have the stop-loss insurance, they stay on top of it. Something that we don't have to worry about. And that's the reason why, not only that, but they're also up to date on all the policies, all the changes that are coming down, especially when we had the Affordable Healthcare Act. They're on top of it. The lady that, that runs the department actually is a speaker at many of the conferences. And she goes to Washington, she's on top of it. So that's the reason why we feel very comfortable with this particular TML.
And I would echo all of what Pete just said. I've been, I've been working with them since I was elected.
I was actually going to ask you.
And they are outstanding, they're exceptional in what they do.
And I've actually, remember, we sat and talked with them several times. They've, so far, they've proven to be the most effective and they're very much, they're very efficient, let's put it that way. And good people.
If Dr. Rose and Pete are on board, I guess they're the best choice. I mean, they're the two experts, right?
And if you ever wanted to look at, the other thing that's a really neat benefit is that if you ever wanted to ask a particular question or carve out a particular group of claims by type or size or shape, whatever, immediately, you have it. And they're very, very good at what they do.
But the doctor says.
But the doctor orders.
That's what the doctor orders.
It's recommended by a doc. Anyway, if there's an action item, is there a motion?
Would it approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 14, this belongs to someone else.
Action item number 14, consideration and action to award a term contract for the vacant lot mowing services for the City of Brownsville Public Health Department.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, I'm presenting this item on behalf of the Health Department. We would like to request your authorization to award a term contract for vacant lot mowing services for the City of Brownsville, for the Health Department. This is for three, three companies. After going through the RFP process, we receive six of medals. Out of the six of medals, we qualify only three. And after doing several negotiations, we came back with the best and final offer. So the companies that we would like to recommend to get approved is Rio's Mowing Services out of San Benito, Mesquite Landscaping Services out of Brownsville, and Flores Tractor Mowing Services out of Brownsville. This contract will allow also other departments to piggyback on that same contract for mowing services. And this contract shall commence upon by, by City Commission and it shall expire August 31st, 2020. It also has the right and option to extend for another two more years. So this is a recommendation from the Evaluation Committee.
If I may, Mr. Una, so this is for vacant lots?
Vacant lot mowing services, mowing services.
And let me ask you, sir. So every time we go mow it, does, who then bills them? Do we actually bill the owner? How does it work?
Okay, let me, let me have the Health Department to answer that question.
Good evening.
Hi.
Commissioner, Honorable Mayor. What we do is we have a process where we send a certified letter out to the property owner. If the property owner doesn't comply, then we send it to get cut. The billing is, and the liens, those are done through legal.
Through who?
Our legal department.
Legal department?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we need to follow up with legal to make sure that everybody who's not mowing, after you send them the letter and we actually go out and do it, that we're actually getting our money back, right?
Don't they end up putting a lien on the property?
That is correct.
And there was only two Brownsville companies that applied or that submitted?
There were six of medals. And out of six, we got only three. And it happens that one of them is out of San Benito. And the other two are from Brownsville.
And what about the other three?
They, they didn't have all the qualifications, insurances, equipment, and, and you know, the type of labor that we're looking for.
So not just anybody can say, oh, I have a lawnmower and let me go cut these? You actually have to have insurance?
You have, you need to have insurance, order of compensation, general liability, automobile liability, tractor, you know, the right equipment.
You want to know if the other three companies were from Brownsville, Commissioner?
Yeah, I just want, shouldn't we get a Brownsville company? If you're, you answered my question, though, they weren't, the other three weren't qualified, basically.
And Charlie, I think, I think it's still on the subject. Is there a way that we can get these people to actually go mow the expressway? Do you think that would be possible?
They belong to the state.
Well, they belong to the state and we get four a year. But we can actually mow it more than four times.
Maybe we can adopt a highway.
Excuse me. We recently, we use the plastic bag thing to, to, to coin ourselves.
The agreement with the state was that we utilize, that we could select, let's say, two or three times out of the year, utilizing plastic bag ordinance funds. However, that's been depleted. We are negotiating with them and trying to find a way to, if we do cut, we need, we need to get some memorandum of understanding and liability because we are cutting private property. However, we do see some of the areas of the expressway that we feel we can safely cut if we can, if we can reach an agreement with them.
Is it expensive, is it expensive to cut that or?
Honestly, we can do it with our staff and our public works people. We have the equipment to do so, or, or some of it. Or we can also, we can also team up.
He's crying back there.
He's getting mad, Charlie.
He's getting scared.
He's hiding.
Well, he's not going to personally do it, he's going to get one of these people to do it.
I know why he's hiding, man.
And also, this contract allows for other departments to piggyback on that. So we have that option, if we can just like that.
I would like to see it cut more open.
Okay, this is an action item.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
That's the last item, Commissioner.
Oh, real quick, Mayor, before we adjourn, I just wanted to share a really cool story that I heard today. Apparently, at our Brownsville Police Department, there is this storage where they keep uniforms that are now out of service. Somebody retires, whatever, they have like this storage of uniforms. And apparently, throughout this Hurricane Harvey disaster, we have a lot of first responders that are working in the Houston, Port Aransas, all of these areas. And they've been working non-stop since even before the hurricane happened. So these first responders who have been doing rescues and all kinds of stuff are wearing the same uniform. They have to be wearing their uniform because they have to identify themselves as first responders. But they have not had a chance to wash or change, or a lot of them have not had the chance or opportunity to change into clean uniforms. So today, thanks to some of our officers, they sent in a request asking if they could send everything that we have in our storage. So you will be happy to know that some of our, our own officers, on their own time, will be driving to the Corpus area, to the Houston area, Rockport area. Over 200 pieces of uniform from the Brownsville Police Department. So I just wanted to let you know, our first responders are incredible people. And I just really, really hope that all of us understand how special our city is because, you know, sometimes we're at each other's throats. But in situations like this, we see these amazing acts of kindness. And I just wanted to share that. So now, these first responders that are working over there are going to have clean, good uniforms.
Mayor, I just want to clarify that item G and the consent items dealing with the zoo was passed, right? Because it was going to be pulled out. So I see Dr. Birchfield here, so I didn't know if he was aware of that.
Second. Aye.